... from NPR News. When you listen to Public--
Don't lie and say you do.
Yeah, I got it.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Moscow Administrative Committee for March 14th, 2016. And the first item we have on our list today is the approval of the February 8th minutes. This committee has not met since. I would move to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
And I wasn't here, so I have no opinion, so we'll consider them approved. Next up is the Beer Garden Request for the Palouse Pride Festival 2016, presented by Dwight Curtis.
Yeah, good afternoon. This is a fairly routine deal. Palouse Pride each year has a beer garden, and this is, there's no changes from previous years, same location for the beer garden, same conditions with security. Police chief has reviewed this and is okay with it. They're paying for one officer. It's for August 13th at East City Park, of course, and from noon to 5:00. And other than that, there's no changes at all.
Comments? Thoughts?
I think we should continue with this. There's been no problems in the past. We should--
Have been no issues.
Maybe put that on the consent agenda for next Monday's meeting.
No objects? I have no objection.
I have none.
Okay.
We're fine.
We will recommend approval of the Beer Garden Request for the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you, Dwight, for your eloquent persuasion.
Well, you really twisted our arms on that one, Dwight.
William Jennings Bryan or something.
Exactly. Next up, Moscow Farmers Market Alcohol Sampling and Sales Resolution from Kathleen Burns.
Okay. So, we have had the tasting and sampling at the market. During the '15 season was the first full year at the market, and it was very successful. Initially, we did the pilot project in Friendship Square, and now it's throughout the whole market. On average, we had the maximum of two this past summer. The resolution, as it reads right now, is a maximum of four per market day as walk-on vendors. We have had a request for two local wineries to become season vendors at the market, and that is Camus Prairie Winery and also Coulters Creek. Camus Prairie Winery was at the market this last summer, 25 out of 27 Saturdays. So he was very consistent and would like to be a season vendor. The question I have, as we discussed with the commission, is if we have two season wineries, and you know Coulters Creek is going to have a brick and mortar downtown, and they want to be a season vendor as well, does that take away, if we have two season vendors, that only leaves us a possible two walk-on spaces? With the expansion of the local breweries here in town, and with the expansion of the viticulture in Lewiston, I think we might want to increase that to six, so then we can have the two season vendors and still have a maximum of four walk-ons on a Saturday.
Do we have enough space to--
Yes, we do. We can, because most wineries, the two requests we have for season vendors are local people that can commit to every Saturday in the market. The ones from Lewiston, probably not so much, you know, to come up the hill. So I just want to bring that forward to you.
Gary?
Couple of questions. This is fairly new. Had a little discussion with Rod this afternoon. I think that the question of having four, and it's been discussed with the commission, to have four alcohol vendors. So if two of them want to become season vendors, that only leaves two for walk-on vendors. If the idea is to provide opportunities for walk-on members, do you want the resolution to read that, I mean, you could end up with six season vendors, the way that it's written now, just a max, or excuse me, the way it's written now, if you do change it to six, that would limit you to six either season vendors, walk-on vendors, or a mixture of the two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So is six the maximum the commission wants at this point, and staff wants? Or do you want to have two season vendors for walk-on vendors? Do you want to have any definition that way? Or is six total fine?
I think six total is fine. I don't think we would open it up to more season vendors, because we're still at that growing phase, and the fact that these two wineries that have expressed interest have both been in the market. Coulters Creek was our first winery coming up to Julieta Kendrick. Camus Prairie found great success in being at the market last summer. So I'm just bringing it forward.
Again, and you have pretty specific, the Farmers Market has pretty specific rules on locally grown, value-added--
200-mile radius.
--local ingredients, that sort of thing. That would all apply to this as well?
Yes.
Is there something in this resolution that says that either the vintner or the brewer has to produce the beverage--
Yep.
--themselves?
They have to sell it themselves. This isn't, this doesn't open up the door for marketers or resellers, and so that's another commitment for somebody to come up from a winery in Lewiston. They have to come up themselves. They can't send marketer. So it does create a little bit of a burden for people out of area.
So, if I may--
Sure.
So the regulations, the Farmers Market policies already regulates that this has to be made by the seller?
Correct.
Okay, isn't within this resolution itself?
It doesn't highlight that in the resolution--
Or the larger Farmers Market rules.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, it's not highlighted in the resolution as far as the requirements of being a vendor. It's just specific to alcohol sampling and sales at the market.
All I'm asking is, do you feel that the Farmers Market policies that are in place now are sufficient to make sure that a wine or beer vendor would have to have brewed or made their wine themselves?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Have, has anyone checked with the state? Because right now, unless the state has changed its rules, you can't be two parts of the three-tier system, which is the manufacturer, the wholesaler, and the retailer.
As I, as we've worked with it in the past, it's up to the retailer, the actual, like, we've had Moscow Brewery, Lucas, we've had Jeremy Ritter, and the one woman from Coulters Creek. They've been responsible for their own business and what they're able to do within their business.
Okay.
And they're very much aware of whether it's state rules, the ABC rules. It's not a catering license. I, you know, with the city of Moscow, it's all related to their business, and their business is, you know, I'm, it's up to them to do their state regs. And we list that in the policies, that, you know, vendors are to follow regulations.
All right.
Yep. Because those can change every year, and we can't put every change of every regulation and every law in the policy. So in the appendixes, we always list the different state agencies that they can reference. So this is the same problem with like eggs, or cheese, or meat. They all have to comply with state regulations and health and safety.
Okay.
Yep.
As long as we're not in--
No.
If we're not involved, we're fine.
Gary?
So you're requesting, the only change in the resolution as presented is you would like to take that to five, or six licensed vendors?
Yep.
Okay. I think the committee just wants to know what's being requested.
Yeah, I have absolutely no problem with increasing the number of vendors. I don't know why we want to, we don't limit the number of produce vendors. I don't know why we would try to limit the number of other people manufacturing legal products.
Sounds like it's covered in the other aspects of the Farmers Market guidelines and regulations, and as long as there's space to put people in and still comply with all the rules, I think it's a good idea, too.
Okay.
So shall we put this on the regular agenda?
It's up to the committee.
I think--
I think--
You want regular, or should we put it on the consent?
This one could hop either direction.
Why don't we put it on consent, and if somebody wants to take it off--
Okay.
I agree. Put it on consent agenda, if somebody has an issue with it, wants to take it off, they can certainly do so.
Yeah.
Okay, and staff will amend the four to six, then.
Yeah.
Yes. So, okay. Oh, Kathleen, don't run away.
I waited this while Gary was out of town, so this is really--
You're up again for the Moscow Farmers Market 2016 policies.
Yes.
Maybe we should have flipped these two items, but--
It's okay. So David Pierce and Gina are in the audience, and they both are on the Farmers Market Commission. So they are two members of the commission that have been working on policies since November. We've been reviewing policies, making recommendations, making motions, discussing, voting. The core changes to this policy document are, we chose to add language for spouses and partners, because a lot of vendors have spouses and have partners, and the way it previously, previously read did not include spouses or partners to be able to be in their booth supporting their business. So we added that this year. The other thing that we added, we added a category describing vendors as value-added. And we did that in, kind of to help us with the registration system, we have a Manage My Market software program, and value-added is listed as, as, as an item. So value-added could be cheese, bread, wine, beer, those types of products. So we added that descriptive as a type of vendor to the policies. We added the performance artists, the daily buskers that we have in the market. We put them in the policies. We've had them sign up on a daily basis and have some requirements on a sheet, but we chose to put them in the policies, because they, there can be as many as five at a time in the market. So we thought it would be good to include them, and looked at other policies from other markets on how they handled buskers. And then the, the big one that we added, we've been working on the mandatory sales requirement. So we get that reporting from the market vendors. In the Manage My Market software program that we utilize for registration, there is a click that you can report your sales. So instead of us doing all this manual paperwork and then aggregating all the paperwork, the software program can do that for us. So we changed the rule to do mandatory reporting with the Manage My Market software. So those are the four major policy changes for 2016.
Gary? With the Manage My Market software, it's supposed to make it more automated for them to report their, their revenues and that sort of thing. There were issues with confidentiality of that information by previous groups of vendors. How's that being dealt with by the commission?
Well, I think what we could do is have them, we, we can work this out with the software program we've discussed with this, with them, and they can actually aggregate it for us. So we can, at any time, work with the software program and have them do reports for us. So when it comes to aggregating the sales numbers, we can call Portland, we can talk to the software, we can aggregate cell numbers, whether it's question number 34 or 45, whatever, and they can do that report for us, so that we're not in the system looking that up, but that they can report it. And I think that's important, because right now what's happening is they're filling out a form, we're aggregating the numbers to the type of sale. DJ is doing the work as a staff person. It's taking probably close to 40 hours a week, and it's already in the software program to be utilized. So it's just an efficiency measure, and it takes the staff person out of it.
And reduces transcription errors, too, I'm sure.
Correct.
So--
That's a very good point.
So as a vendor, you, is there like a mobile app that you can use a smartphone to report your sales with?
Yep, you just, you just line, register online, and then you open up your account. Yep.
Yeah, it's a--
It's an efficient way to do it.
Yeah, it's a great step forward, because we had a situation where they were reporting every week to--
Yep.
--the city clerk, which was causing a bunch of administrative headache. So this way, I'm glad that the commission and Kathleen have come up with this ability to be able to automate that. I mean, you want convenience for the vendors, and, and they want to have as much confidentiality as possible, but each additional expense of running the market is something that eventually has to be passed on to someone.
Right.
So it's a great step forward.
How, how has the accuracy been as far as the actual numbers that are presented?
Well, you know, we do the best we can. The vendors do the best they can. As far as accuracy, the numbers have gone up, you know, but the market has also grown. I think this might be a better system, because it takes out a middleman process, and it takes out human error. And I think it'll actually be a better process, because it'll be more in their business camp versus us.
Well, also, you wouldn't know what the accuracy was anyway, because you don't know what the true number would be.
No.
So it's a shot in the dark, so you don't really know. But all you can say is that through their introducing the data themselves, you would take out one person trying to, is that a zero or a six?
Right.
And stuff like that goes on. So it sounds like a good idea to me. Backing up one item, what does the commission see as some of the performance issues with the buskers? What kind of performance issues are being addressed?
It's not so much performance issues.
The guidelines.
If we go into the policies, we just added them, because it, they're a part of our workload. So we added them, because it's like, it only makes sense if we're listing child vendors and walk-on vendors, that we highlight the music buskers as well. And we just want them to be aware that they're a part of the market, and they're not like on their own somewhere. And we do ask them for guidelines as far as family-friendly music, rotating two-hour increments of time, not solicit, soliciting, proselytizing. It's performance music. Yep.
And backing up to your comment about value-added.
Yep.
Isn't everything that we do down there value-added?
Ah, that's pretty good.
Not with the raw product.
Just produce that hasn't been processed in any way. If you pull carrots out of the ground and take them to the Farmers Market, you really haven't added much value to them.
If you turn them into a cake, then you have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we could talk about that for days. Because I think you have. Because if they're sitting in, the carrot is sitting in somebody's garden, it has no value, really, until someone pulls it out, cleans it, wraps it, and either takes it into their kitchen or takes it down. But I was just more of an informational question than it was anything else.
That's okay. That's okay. Well, just remember, March 25th is the craft and food jury in this room. So you can sign up to be a jurist, and then that might help, you know, with tasting jams and jellies.
So I have a chance to make more friends.
Yes, you could, John. That's true. That's true. That's very true. Or have a free lunch.
Yeah, well, see, now it's becoming much more attractive.
There you go. So--
So, what do you think?
I'm fine.
Administrative people?
Move forward with the--
So accept the policy.
--policy changes there.
Okay.
I think we put that on--
On the consent, I would think.
The consent agenda, too.
Yep.
There again, if somebody wants to discuss it further, they can pull it off.
Agreed.
He's out of the room, I'm sorry. So these changes will be presented to the vendors well in advance of the market season, so, and the changes basically affect the vendors, and more than anything.
Yep.
So I think consent agenda would be fine, if you'd like to do that.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Kathleen, don't run away.
I'm not. I'm right here.
We're moving on to reports now, and the first report is Love Your Farmer, Love Your Food.
So I'm going to introduce Jessica Briarly, my new Americor. And she works primarily with the market, and--
Hi.
She comes from Chico, California, and her degree was in food and nutrition.
Oh, good stuff.
Yeah.
And so I was able to be a part of Love Your Farmer, Love Your Food as a co-host. Some of the other co-hosts are listed in front of you, the Moscow Food Co-op, the U of I Extension, and Americor, the city of Moscow, Palouse Clearwater Food Coalition, Royal Roots, and the CCE at WSU, Center for Civic Engagement. Love Your Farmer was hosted on January 28th this year, and it was a event that we were trying to further create and solidify bonds between farmers and community members, really get them engaged with one another, and let the members of the community also know that like farmers work all year round, and, you know, kind of get a little bit of an insight to what they deal with. So get to know where your food comes from and the people working hard to provide it for you. The planning committee affiliations, I already listed for you earlier. Guest speakers, what we have here is the driving distance for the event, so those that were on our panel, we had Palouse Prairie Kobe from Tecoah, Washington. This is for their--
Get on the case.
Tico.
Tico.
Yeah, I've messed that up a couple times.
Moscow.
Yeah. So this is a there-and-back driving distance. So all in all, they did 100 miles to get to our event as a volunteer. River City Farm came from Lewiston. Little Bear Dairy traveled from Troy. We had Swallow Tail Flowers right here in Moscow, so that was convenient for them. And Clearwater Canyon Cellars also traveled from Lewiston. Some of the media outlets that we used for the advertising, Home &amp; Harvest Magazine, we paid for advertising in their magazine. We had the sponsors webpage, so all of us that co-hosted the event, we just threw it out on all of our medias and things. We did a formal press release. The Tri-State Readers Board had us on one side, and then the, oh, the Food Summit was on the backside. And then we distributed posters around town. We had a local radio broadcast that Misty at the Co-op put together. Moscow Cares website even put us on their website for the event. Facebook, these are just numbers from the Co-op's page, because Misty had put it from her page initially, and then we all shared it as co-hosts on our pages. So just from the Co-op's page, it reached 9,100 people viewed by 5:48, and then 142 engaged with the post. So that's either like they pressed, like yes, they were going, or they were interested, or declined in some, some way or another, not just checking out the event. But, and then the original post for the event on the page from the Co-op received 63 likes, comments, and shares in total. And then we had a sign-in count for people. 56 people signed in, in attendance, although we had a couple of different entrances. So just from counting heads, it was over about 110 that were there, all in all, but we didn't have a formal number, just because we hadn't accounted for those double entrances. And we also provided a resource fair at the event. So as people snacked and kind of hung around, we had several different tables for people to get information. The Moscow Food Co-op, we hosted a Farmers Market table there. Royal Roots came, the Pullman Farmers Market was represented, U of I Extension had a table, the PCFC, Wilson Banner Ranch, Link Tarts Ranch, Ramstead, and Omachi Farm, they all came and had information about their farms. Backyard Harvest represented what they do, and then the WSU Center for Civic Engagement also came. And this is just a picture of the event's poster itself, what we put around town. So the arts department expenses, what came directly from us, we had the 1912 Center Great Room rental, so it was $35 an hour for four hours, equalling 140. There was an additional tablecloth fee, alcohol fee, which totaled 205. The beverages, we brewed the coffee from here. The sugar and lemons were the only purchases. I donated the tea. And then we had poster printing in-house as well, so a total of 215 is what we had to pay. And then doors prize donations, I hounded some folks and got amazing results. So Bloom donated $50, Nectar, they had dinner for two, so that was an estimate of about $60. Mileena, 20. Camus Prairie Winery donated a yummy bottle of wine. Clearwater Cultures, they had donated some skincare products. Taylor Made Kitchen donated a lot of like homemade goods. Donna Maker donated dried fruit leathers and other things. Woodland Apiaries, they donated some honey for us. Lodgepole, dinner for two. Humble Burger also gave a nice donation. And then in-kind donations, other than the door prizes, we had Patty Brem from the Kitchen Counter. She had donated her time to do all of our catering, so that was roughly about $600 worth of things we didn't have to pay for. It's pretty amazing. She did a lot of correspondence with Iris Mays at U of I Extension and myself regarding menus, and how to get the food, and everything in that nature. And all the food that she used was donated. The PNW and the U.S. Dry Pea and Lentil Council, like they donated all the lentils that she utilized for the catering. Rose Hours donated a gift certificate, and we had them bake the baguettes for us. And then the RB Turkey Horticulture Orchard donated beets, pears, and apples to be made for the little catering event, yeah. So, let's see, volunteer time, we had the planning committee, roughly, all in all, we put in as a total about 54 hours, and we're all paid staff, so that didn't make it into the independent sector. Guest speakers, for those that came and drove, with their driving time included, it was about 20 and a half hours. So if we were all going off of what Idaho totals as what volunteers would get paid for, I wish we got paid $20.21 an hour, but for grant purposes, the guest speakers would have been paid 409. The resource fair, I excluded those that were on the planning committee, because of course we were already there, so our resources were easily brought. But those that came in addition to, the seven of them doing 28 hours, would have been $565. And then the 12 volunteers that we had put in together, a total of 44 and a half hours, nearing $960. So that's almost a $2,000 savings, just in time, from people in the community.
And we had students from WSU, CC Civic, Center for Civic Engagement. We also had, what was the beef club from University of Idaho?
Yeah, it was the cattle ranch from the U of I, like, or the cattle club.
They were volunteers as well?
They had come, and we had, I mean, some volunteers had literally just brought their friends, like, hey, I'm working this cool event. So word of mouth got out, too, and people ended up showing up with some extra hands. Yeah, Ashley Hope, actually, who's in another Americor, she's a Vista with the Center for Civic Engagement, she had put together on the Vandal Sink, and then the Kuve Sink, like she kept up with those that were students wanting to look to volunteer. So she organized all the volunteers for this event. So, yeah, we had a good turnout that way. And then here's just a few pictures of the panel, that's kind of how we had it set up. And then, that's about it. Any questions?
Any feedback from the attendees?
We didn't, actually, other than just word of mouth things that I'd heard. Friends of mine that had attended said it was like really nice to hear what the panel had to say. The topics were a nice variety. We had them talking anywhere from pollinators to CSAs, to some of the things that the Clearwater Canyon Winery has to go through as far as their regulations and things like that, just to get people a little bit more informed, and like all of the things that they have to do as farmers, and all the regulations, and all the paperwork that they deal with. So it gives people a little bit more of an idea of, you know, like they are real businesses as well. They're not just out there like picking the carrots out of the ground and throwing them on the table, you know, like they're really formal, you know, so, yeah.
I know, that's what you do, yeah. And then that's it.
I'm good, thank you.
So just an observation, a really big kudos to the Co-op. This year, they really stepped forward with this, and they want to partner with us next year, and really take the lead, so we'll be support with Americor, but the Co-op is really interested in taking the lead on this one, which is really great. So we've grown an event, but we can partner, so. Yep.
Thanks, Jessica, welcome to town.
Awesome, thank you.
And finally, Gary Redner, his own self, who's going to be talking to us about the Partnership for Economic Prosperity and the formulation status thereof.
Thank you. If I could have Gina Terusio come aboard as well?
If I could have Gina Terusio come aboard as well?
The PEP people. Welcome, Gina.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Well, thank you for allowing us this report.
Thank you, sir.
We are here representing the Partnership for Economic Prosperity, Inc., which is an organization, a collaboration, if you will, of the city of Moscow, Leitau County, University of Idaho, Chamber of Commerce, and all of the other cities in Leitau County, all the other incorporated cities, as well as commercial business members, and then we also have opportunities for individuals to become involved as well. This is an organization that is providing, will provide, economic development services in a collaborative fashion, more of a region-wide Leitau County entity, if you will. This is something we proposed during last year's budget, it's taken a little time to get off the ground, with the Leitau Economic Development Council disbanded at this point, and hasn't been very active in the last couple of years. We had, the city of Moscow had, at one time, halftime economic development director, as well as a halftime Urban Renewal Agency Executive Director. That position, the Urban Renewal Agency Executive Director, as you know, has been absorbed into the Community Development Director position, and leaving us somewhat at odds with not having any active economic development. It's been handled through a bunch of different departments, mainly administration and community development. So, this was an idea to take approximately the amount of money that we had in the halftime position, see if we could get more bang for our buck by collaborating with our other partners. And the idea was to proceed in a fashion not unlike the collaborative economic development program that's going forth in the Magic Valley area, where they've branded themselves as a food kind of produce area, producing dairy products, Chobani yogurt, Cliff Bar, those sorts of things. We wouldn't have anything that would be quite that, to that extent, but still, we believe that there are opportunities in Leitau County that are best kept to Leitau County, there are opportunities in the other incorporated cities that would help those incorporated cities, and, of course, anybody who needs the large services and the amalgamation of services that we have, concentration of services in Moscow would naturally come to Moscow. So, the group, we've gotten together, what you have before you is a draft list of deliverables, which were things that I drafted up, floated out with the mayor and council leadership a couple of months ago, getting the tentative right direction nod. We moved ahead, the group has met, and with the assistance of Susan Wilson, who's graciously donating her time for a lot of the legal work, we have put together amended articles of incorporation. The PEP is incorporated through the state of Idaho, fairly simple process, and not very descriptive of what we expect PEP to do. So, the amended articles are, they're just being fine-tuned right now, but they're about six pages long, and they'll be coming back as we present the entire package to council. We've also put together a set of bylaws, which will be available as well. The bylaws talk about, I know with the old LEDC, there used to be, I'm not going to say distrust, but there was always some trepidation as to whether the executive director was spending more efforts outside of Moscow than within Moscow, who's getting the most bang for the buck. This is intended so that everybody has a seat at the table. It's a smaller board of directors, LEDC had a much larger board of directors, this board of directors will be seven, I believe, seven people, seven positions. All of the eight, the entities, the institutional entities, city, university, county, Chamber of Commerce will have designated seats at the table, the incorporated Leitau County cities would have a seat at the table, and then there would be two positions available for commercial entities who pay their dues, and the dues are a little bit more expensive than they were for LEDC. Want to make sure that people have skin in the game, and as decisions are made going forward, that they're best for the entire collaboration or collaborative entity. So, the bylaws also talk about how the meetings hopefully will be pretty effective, we intend on meeting twice a month, at the beginning at least. One of the things we wanted to make sure of is that the institutional entities, and of course, all the board members and members of PEP are continuously updated as to what's going on. Economic development, at least with the incorporators, who Gina's an incorporator, Paul Kimmel is an incorporator, and I am an incorporator. That's just to get the articles incorporation file. But the idea is that economic development is a living, breathing, changing thing, and meeting once a month likely is not going to get you the kind of direction that an executive director needs in order to move ahead. PEP also anticipates, you recall, the council last year authorized in the two thousand and sixteen budget, forty thousand dollars to be put toward the PEP effort. Leitau County has indicated that they are in for a significant amount, I believe almost that amount. Preliminary indications from the University of Idaho is that they are up for that as well. So, we've got, we believe, a preliminary budget that will allow us to hire a quality executive director, and have sufficient funding from the entities, so that we can proceed to do the things that need to be done. You're going, it's going to be run somewhat like a city or a county budget, you'll have to have a printing and binding budget, because you're going to want to put materials out, there'll have to be a certain amount for training, a certain amount for travel, you have to go where economic development is, so those sorts of things. So, we've really tried to think, think it all out, and this package should be together, we wanted to give you the preliminary, but we should have the package together within a month to bring back to you. The state, or, excuse me, the IRS, when you file for your tax-exempt status, they need a preliminary budget, the amended articles of incorporation, the bylaws, a bunch of that information, Susan's graciously putting that application together, it's a really thick application, if you've ever done one before. So, we're getting that ready to go, so that she can send that in. Coincidentally, that will give us a package to bring back to council, back to county commissioners, President Staben, the Board of Directors of the Chamber, and hopefully, we'll put together a presentation for each of the incorporated cities in Leitau County other than Moscow. So, we're really excited about it, and this is the first, if you wanted to kind of get a sneak preview as to what this would do, the deliverables that you see here is a start, and the different entities will have slightly different deliverables. We'll also have regular reports back to the entities, so lots of good things happening, and we can't wait to get started.
Is there a timeline relative to issuing the job description and invitation to apply? Does that have to wait until the IRS says okay, and go from there?
We don't, we don't believe that it does, so we have, I've got the job description about halfway drafted at this point. My anticipation is, once the package is ready to go, we will go ahead and start advertising at the same time that that application is pending before the, before the IRS. We don't anticipate there will be any problems with issuance.
So, any
That will be, yeah. After we've got the university
Absolutely.
And the county, and, yeah.
And, and just so you know, we've had, we've approached President Staben, and he's personally indicated that the university is committed, council committed through the FY sixteen budget, county commission is also committed, and as has the Chamber of Commerce. So, and we've also got, been approached by a couple of commercial entities who've indicated a interest as well.
So, any idea about when the switch gets thrown proverbially, and?
Well, I think we do need, we can do some preliminary things, but I don't think we would be advised, well-advised, to hire an executive director until we get the tax exempt. That doesn't mean we can't advertise, get the ball rolling, and just within the advertisement say that the tax exempt status has been applied for, and we expect to have it up and running within a certain period of time.
So, looking kind of summer, early fall?
I would think that we would be able to have somebody on in the early summer, if everything goes right. One of the things that has always been an issue with, I know it was an issue with LEDC back in the day, was who did the executive director work for? It was the LEDC at one time, when the LEDC had a contract to provide incubator management services for the North Idaho Business Technology Incubator on Sweet Avenue. When that went back to the University of Idaho, that position, the executive director was actually employed for the University of Idaho for a short time. And part of that reason was because there were benefits that the executive director could get. Then, when incubation went away, LEDC took back the position, and it was very difficult to provide a benefit package, it was competitive, that drew any quality candidates. We were fortunate to get some good candidates in spite of that, however, we want to be able to make sure that we can compete. So, that's all coming together, we anticipate, being able to pay, or at least offer a competitive compensation, as well as some form of health insurance, or something akin to that, with some opportunities for some type of retirement as well.
Anything to contribute, Gina?
Gary's mentioned a couple times the fact that the chamber is involved in this and has taken part. It is the first time in the chamber history that, that the entity itself has put money aside for economic development. So, it is a gigantic moment for us, and we're really, really excited to be here at the table. So, we can't, it can't happen soon enough in our, in our book.
I like getting enthusiasm from the commercial sector.
Definitely, definitely.
So, the incorporation is as a 501(c)(3), or?
501(c)(6), I believe, is what it will be.
Not that that means much to the rest of us.
Well, it depends whether you can have, you can advocate or not. I hesitate to call it lobbying, it's not lobbying, but if, if you are, do have that ability, if you're going to have some sort of legislative advocacy, you can't do it with a 501(c)(3).
John?
I think we're moving in the right direction here.
I'm happy to hear the report and
The timeframe that Gary has proposed, I think is rather aggressive, which is just fine.
Well, we hope to, we hope to move it ahead, we've been working on it for a long time, so, we just had a big organizational meeting about two weeks ago, and actually signed the documents to get rolling, so we, we anticipate we should move pretty quickly now.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you for the report. Yes, very much. Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of the administrative committee's order?
Nothing from here, sir.
Okay. Okay, we're adjourned for two weeks.